Board of Commissioners staff meeting June 4th, 2024. I ask everybody to introduce themselves on the dais.
I'm C. Rachel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Sombro-Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
James Sayre, Counsel for the Board.
I'm Hamilton County Commission President Alicia Reese. All right, we have a couple items on the agenda. We'll get right into it. Our first item is the dog license amnesty program. And we have Beth Ward, Hamilton County Dog Warden. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today, President Reese, Mr. Dreehouse, and Commissioner Dumas. My name is Beth Ward, and I am the Hamilton County's Chief Dog Warden. It's a pleasure to meet with each of you and speak on behalf of Cincinnati Animal Care and the Hamilton County Dog Wardens Services. I appreciate your willingness to get this item added to the agenda so quickly. It took me by surprise, and a happy surprise at that, with hopes of rolling out something this year that could help with pets for this upcoming holiday weekend. Historically, this is the busiest time of year for animal shelters around the country. Dog licensing is exceptionally important to Cincinnati Animal Care. Hamilton County and the rest of the nation are seeing an increase in lost and stray dogs. Across the nation, we have seen an increase in stray dog intake of 8% from year 2022 to 2023. Recent studies report that the national compliance rate for licensing averages between 17% to 20%. In Hamilton County, the compliance rate is almost 14%. So I see we have a lot of room for improvement. Licenses and a microchip double the odds of a lost pet getting back home and believe in the power licensing has to return animals home when they are lost. Our team is considering several initiatives to increase dog license sales. Would like to propose one option to you today. In an effort to increase license compliance, I'm here today to propose a 10-day trial period for offering an amnesty for the late fee penalties for renewed and new dog licenses that are typically applied for between the licensing period of January 31st and the next licensing period. Cincinnati Animal Services would like to pilot this amnesty program for 10 days leading up to the 4th of July. The proposed dates are June 24th through July 3rd. To sweeten the deal, for Hamilton County residents, Cincinnati Animal Care will offer microchipping and vaccinations during this time to those who purchase 2024 dog licenses. It is our hope that the buzz created around the amnesty period and a $5 microchipping and free vaccinations will bring much-needed attention to the importance of dog licensing and getting pets home. Through data tracking, we'll be able to see if this amnesty period works as it's intended and in compliance to increase compliance in Hamilton County, increasing and benefiting both the county and the residents and their pets. Amnesty is a strategy used by countless animal shelters and municipalities around the country to increase compliance, thereby generating much-needed revenue and opportunities to reunite dogs with families. Benefits to the county include increased revenue and less dogs spending time at the county shelter, therefore decreasing the overall cost of shelter operations. With licenses, lost dogs that end up at the shelter will be returned home much more quickly, in some cases, same day, significantly decreasing the cost of care and reducing overcrowding at the county shelter. One of my favorite things is to have one of my deputies tell me that before they could even round the corner, they were able to identify that dog's owner and get it back home and not have to bring it to the shelter. We also understand the revenue generated supports animal services in our community. In Orange County, California, the animal shelter ran an amnesty period and saw a 25% increase in sales over the previous year. In Hamilton County, if we were to do a similar amnesty program, it could be equivalent up to $147,000 of an increase in sales over 2023. Another city in California, I'm a little biased because that's where I'm from, California saw a 9% increase in sales during their amnesty period in 2022 in Long Beach. An important benefit to pet owners is that licensing provides legal proof of ownership and has the ability to distinguish a lost dog from a stray. Coming to a shelter can be stressful for a dog, and a license found on a dog can allow anyone the ability to look up the tag number to get the dog back home quickly, hopefully avoiding a trip to the shelter altogether. Licenses also extend the hold period, giving an owner more time to find their dog before it's made available for adoption. And during the amnesty period, Cincinnati Animal Care will extend an offer for the $5 microchips and free vaccinations, thereby offering an additional incentive that will benefit pet owners for the service that they may not and may otherwise be able to afford. So we ask that the County Board of Commissioners support our proposal to pilot an amnesty dog license period from June 24th to July 3rd to waive any late fees for residents that renew or purchase new licenses for dogs during this time. And as mentioned before, this includes our additional proposal to add low-cost microchips and vaccines to those families who've come to the shelter on Colrain to purchase their licenses. I want to thank you all for your time and consideration of this proposal. If approved, our team will be ready to support the sales of licenses and the administration of microchips and vaccines at the Colrain Shelter beginning in three weeks on Monday, June 24th. I do have some just high-tip handouts, if I'm allowed to present them to you. If not, that's totally understandable, I could provide them in another way.
Yes, you can provide them to the clerk, and she will, if you want to give it to them.
Oh, I can do it now, okay, thank you. I can do that.
Is that the end of your presentation?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. Yes, give it right to the clerk, and we'll make sure we get those. Thank you for your presentation. I'm going to open it up to the Commissioners, Vice President Dreehouse, who may have comments or questions.
Thank you, I do have a couple of questions. Thank you for being here. How long have you been on the job?
Well, I actually joined the organization quite at the end of January and then had to take a little time to move my family from the West Coast over here, so my real first day on the job was February 12th.
Okay, well, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome to the county.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming in. We've had previous dog wardens in, but yeah, it's great to see you. And thank you for bringing this proposal forward. A couple of questions, one is kind of a high-level question. You talked about the number of dogs that we see that are brought to the shelter, especially at this time of year. What is the dynamic that is driving that increase?
So, the normal dynamic across the nation is July 4th, the fireworks, because a lot of dogs and people, because we don't want to forget our veterans out there, fireworks create a traumatic event. But in our particular area, especially this year, I think we're going to see a potential increase just due to the amount of rain and thunderstorms that we've had over the period of time, because we have fences and grounds and gates that have been loosened and weakened by storms. And so when you have a fearful dog and they want to get out, and they want to get out badly, they will disappear very quickly.
So is this, it's a cyclical thing that it happens around the 4th of July every year?
Yes, in most areas, you see fireworks happening around the 4th of July, Memorial Day, and New Year's. So those are all days of concern for animal shelters.
So interesting. Okay, so you're anticipating this increase. So you talked about waiving the late fee for someone that has not gotten a license and they should have by now, and, but then the license fee remains, is that correct?
That would be correct, unless the Commissioners would like otherwise.
So what is the license fee?
$19 for a regular license fee for our residents in Hamilton County.
So is that renewed every year?
That's correct, yes, unless you are a person who has purchased a three-year license or a permanent license, we also have those options in our county.
And do you know the cost of those?
The three-year is $57, and the lifetime is $190.
Okay. And then could you tell us the amount of the fee that you're proposing be waived?
The amount of the fee would be $19 if there is a person that is getting a new license during this time period, because it's our off-season for licensing, because we have a season or a licensing period in Hamilton County. And during the non-period, licensing period, the families who license their pets have to pay a late fee. So they would pay an additional $19 on top of their regular license fee of $19. So if we were able to hit our goals and be able to sell an additional 200 and some odd licenses, that would mean about $5,000 worth of revenue gained, but also potentially revenue lost due to the late fees, because the late fees are the same as the license fee.
They're not collecting them anyway, so.
That's correct.
People aren't doing the licensing.
Yeah, and this is not the end of the conversation, of course. This is something that is built upon. One of the challenges is keeping the thought of registering or licensing your pet in front of pet owners. Because a lot of people, they don't think about it, except when they get a reminder in the mail, right? And then they think, oh, I'll get to it when I get to it, and then, oops, I forgot, and now I'm in the late period, and I have to pay twice, so I'll just ignore it until next year, and then I'll do it again, so.
Right, no, I think it's a great idea, and I think, as you say, not only does it help increase revenue, it also gets the dog's license, which ultimately is the goal, and it puts it in front of people as a reminder. So I think it's a good idea, I'm happy to support the initiative, just didn't know what kind of dollar amounts we were talking about. So one last question, how do you intend, if we were to agree, how would you intend to publicize this amnesty so that people are aware that it's happening?
Well, some of the ways that are, of course, always the easiest, is working with Auditor's Office to update the Auditor's webpage. Second is for our agency to have it on our website, on our social media, pushing it out through all of our local cities' social media sites. Nextdoor is a really great method of getting the word out to people. I've also considered us having some of our volunteers go to different areas and hand out little tiny flyers or reminders with a little maybe QR code, so it's easy-peasy, you can just go and register your pet right there.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you for your presentation. I wonder how many people really know that you have to register your animal?
How many people here?
Nobody.
Yeah, there's one. Okay, so you're talking about 2% of our population might know?
Yeah, so, but it's great to do, and I love your idea about the microchip, I just absolutely love it. I can remember, and Jeff, you might be able to help me with this, maybe like in 17, we had several locations where you could register your animal, and we closed them down, and now it's only...
At the shelter?
At the shelter, and...
Or online.
Or what?
Or online.
Or online, yeah, because it used to be at the BMVs and things like that. So my question is, do we, I don't know why that stopped, but I think maybe Rhodes, not Rhodes, Dusty, yeah, Dusty Rhodes, I think he might have had something to do with that. And what was the reason for that?
Sorry, I can't remember exactly what the main reason was. I do know that we have the two located, the online at the shelter at this point, but I can't recall. John, I don't know if John Brugan might remember.
I believe for a while, the Auditor's Office had stopped doing remote license sales in hardware stores and things like that outside of the license period, because there were just so few sales, they were having to send out cars to pick up those licenses from February through November, when there were very few sales in those locations.
Okay, okay, thank you, John.
Commissioner Dumas, I just would like to just concur with what John was mentioning. That's commonly an issue, especially years ago, when you had to sell licenses in different places, and you have to have somebody drive around, collect the licenses, input them, you know, as a money issue. Nowadays, we're so electronic, where there's a lot more ease that we can do, and working with various agencies with the Commissioners' permission, we can start to explore those things, where we can use like QR codes and local, working with local pet stores, local vets, where people can do that. I actually am very encouraged, because in many states, the licensing or registration of pets is directly connected to getting your rabies certificate. And here, we don't put that weight on the rabies certificate, we certainly encourage everybody to get rabies vaccinated for their dogs, but it makes it a little bit easier for people to do, and it also, I think, will make our veterinarians more compliant for providing the information so that we can get more animals registered.
Thank you. And I was also thinking about whoever's listening and whoever we send the media out to, you may be overwhelmed with people wanting to come and get their license and the chip, and I know from what I hear, you guys could probably use a little bit more staff. So I'm just wondering, do you want to spread out, I mean, I know you want to start June the 24th to July the 3rd, and I'm just wondering, you were talking about maybe the option of other people getting the license, that you may want to, I don't know, it's up to you, because I think it's a great idea, if you want to start now, I just don't want our staff that are there, doing all those great things, not to be able to do what they need to do because all these people are coming in for licensing. So just something to think about, because as soon as you said about the chip, people who may not even have license, oh, they're coming in for the chip. So just thinking about how it may somewhat overwhelm the staff that are there, that's all.
And I appreciate, I appreciate, Commissioner, that you are thinking of those staff members, because they do work very hard and diligently to serve our community. But if the Commissioners would consider it an extension to that 10-day period, we'd be willing to explore that as well. But that's why we did look at a 10-day period for a multitude of things. It's hard to keep marketing momentum for 30 days, I've done many amnesty programs for 30 days, it's hard to keep that going. I'd almost much rather look at doing various different programs throughout the year, but your point of the overwhelming impact to staff, we could address in other ways, like being able to give a person a coupon if we weren't able to serve them that day, to come back on another day or make appointments. We also do vaccine and microchipping clinics as well.
Okay, great, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, I would like to invite, if the Auditor's Office wants to say anything as well, add anything, or...
Thank you, my name is Amy Humpherson with the Auditor's Office, and we did kind of verify, first of all, there were more locations, but some voluntarily pulled out, whether it was due to staffing, because they couldn't be available when we had people going out to pick up the fees and the licenses, and we have more that participate during the license renewal in that period annually, so there's more available then. Right now, we still have the Cincinnati Animal Care, Humane Society, obviously, SPCA of Sharonville, and a small hardware store in Cheviot that collect them year-round. So there are still three places, but that's why we have less now, they pulled out voluntarily. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. And you said, what's the start date again, June?
It'd be Monday, June 24th, is what we've proposed.
Okay, so we would need a resolution, Mr. Aludo?
Yeah, so I'm assuming that at this point, we would need some type of resolution for this to happen, so we can, I know John has been working with Beth and would be working with the Auditor's Office to do some final analysis on the program. I think even up until recently, there was some concern about, because we'd talked about amnesty programs in the past, and there was some concern about whether we could do it under the ORC. I think we've got some anecdotal evidence now that we can in Ohio, so we would just want to package that into a resolution, bring it before the Board. We could do it very quickly, once we feel ready to move forward, whether it's by leave this coming Thursday or at our next meeting. But I know with the holiday coming up, we want to get this done fairly quickly.
Yeah, we're on summer schedule, and you need time to market, at least to get the word out.
Yes.
For me, it's a no-brainer, because if they're not registering, we don't have any money, so it's no different than amnesty, but at least they would be registered, but we'd be able to get them on the books. So I know it's a very tough, a tough job. I do want to add that there are folks homeless who have dogs, and obviously, if they're homeless, they can't afford to register their dog. So maybe not this time or today, but like to see something. We just left a major press conference for our veterans, and maybe there's something, like you said, ongoing programming, ongoing things that we can do to roll out, because you're right, I'm a marketer by trade, but you're right, the only way it works is if you say, you only got a short amount of time to get in, and then there's another promotion, it's kind of like a promotion. So just wanted to put that in front of you, to our new dog warden, that those are things that I would be looking at if there's something we could roll out eventually for veterans, something we could roll out for homeless folks with dogs. We've been seeing, I know on social media, where the people are trying, not here, hopefully not here, but where they were trying to take homeless people's dogs from them. So we just, there's a lot of components, and I know that you're, you're ready to get rolling on a lot of stuff, but I just wanted to put that in front of you.
President Reese, you're speaking my language. I have a very soft heart for the unhoused and veterans, and also our seniors in our community, I think I'm one of them now, I'm not sure which one, but the...
According to ARP, everybody is.
Yeah, but I think the main thing here is that, what I've seen of Hamilton County and of the Commissioners and the county staff, is that everybody is really focused on providing the best service possible to our Hamilton County residents, and this is just one way of doing it, and we have a lot of people, like you said, unhoused or otherwise, that have animals that can play an important part of their life, and if we can help make these things possible, I tell you, from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate it, thank you.
Awesome, so that's the plan, you get with Mr. Brugan, and we'll try to get something too in front of us.
Yeah, let's get a resolution.
As quick as we can, so we can get moving, because 4th of July, I'll be here before we can blink our eyes.
Yes, ma'am, lookie, split, you got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Let me ask, I have a question.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I noticed on your sheet that you gave us, it was a 2.6% increase in stray dogs, and so are they, most of the stray dogs, are they, when a 2% increase local here, and so are you thinking they are coming from that population that was just mentioned, the homeless, or have you, do they have chips in them, or the ones that you have?
Yeah, so the 2.6% increase in stray dogs coming into our shelter are year-to-date, so January 1st to January, or July, June 2nd, I think is what I ran the report through. And what we're seeing is that it's every level of population where these animals are coming from, we do have some key areas that I want to be able to target services to, because I believe that since the pandemic, and this is not unique to Hamilton County, but what we're seeing is an increase in dogs in our counties and our areas, and that could be because people are breeding animals in the backyard, trying to make a little extra money after, you know, COVID, some people are still a little offbeat, you know, so I think we have a lot of things that we can do that I'm looking forward to coming and speaking to you on behalf of in the future.
Okay, do the majority of those stray dogs have chips or not?
No.
No, that's all I have, thanks.
Okay, thank you, we'll get the resolution, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, have a good day.
And next, we've got a presentation by Mr. Aludo, homeowner, resource...
Thank you, Commissioner. So I do have a presentation, I asked Christie to pull that up. Just wanted to provide the Board with an update on some of the homeowner assistance programs that we have out there. As we know, we're still in a time, we've got the, we've got border revision hearings going on, we have the second settlement date of property taxes coming due, and so just thought this was a good time to provide the Board with an update on these programs. I do want to say, as I go into this, that we'll be talking about three specific categories of programs, our mortgage property tax, utility relief programs, home repair programs, and utility programs, but people, I probably can't say this enough throughout this presentation, that if you go to 513relief.org, all of these programs are there, programs that are operated by the county, programs that are operated by other agencies. I think when we set up 513relief.org, the Board was very specific that we wanted to have a one-stop resource for residents, whatever type of service they might need. So if you go to 513relief.org, you'll find information on housing and utility assistance, small business assistance, you'll find out where the 513 relief bus is going to be, you'll find information regarding employment, health services, et cetera. So I just really want to encourage people who may be watching to go to that website, because more than anything, that's the place you're going to be able to get what you need. You can also call 211 as well, and our partners with United Way are there to help assist people getting the assistance that they need. I'm going to walk through this presentation, but I do want to say that this program is implemented on a day-to-day basis by all of the individual agencies that are under the 513 relief umbrella, but here internally, we have Holly Christman, Bridget Doherty, Sarah Adams, we have Amanda Carter, we have our 513 relief team with Trevina Adams, we have all of our JFS staff with Michael Patton and everyone under Michael that serves as a part of this, so just so many people that are involved with bringing these programs to bear, that I, while I'm going to give the presentation, as we get into questions and answers, it's just a nice way of saying I'm going to be leaning on all those folks to answer questions. I don't want to leave out Anson Turley either, because we'll be talking about some programs here from a homeowner assistance perspective, that the Board has recently approved, that will be helping in that regard as well. So first and foremost, on the mortgage property tax and utility relief programs, these, this is a program that we're, that we've implemented using our federal ARPA dollars. This is a program where individuals can get up to six months of assistance on past due mortgage, property tax, or utilities for owner-occupied properties. Programs are available to individuals with, or homeowners with income levels under 300% of federal poverty level. So for instance, that would be $45,180 for a single homeowner. Since we've launched this program, we have assisted 1,521 homeowners in this county, and I just want to stop for a moment and say that this is a time, I think, in the county's history, as we go to 513relief.org, we have more programming out there to assist homeowners and just residents in general of this county than I think we ever have in the history of this county, and it's funneled through this 513relief.org. So again, 1,521 homeowners served just through this program, using approximately $6 million is just an incredible service to the residents of this county. We have roughly $90,000 remaining in this program. I don't want to get, that number is a little bit misleading, though, I didn't want to get ahead of the Board on this Thursday's agenda, we have an item on the agenda adding $369,000 to our mortgage and utility relief program, so that number, presuming Board, the Board concurrence on that recommendation, will be going back up to close to $500,000 after Thursday's agenda. We also have, on this slide, we've got some, as the Board has seen in the past, some gender and race breakdowns of how these dollars have been allocated, as well as by zip code. You can see the 45211 zip code, 45231, 45239 is the three leading zip codes for the mortgage property tax and utility relief programs. Just a bit about the breakdown, so this is just 2024 results, but you can see that of the 2024 payments that we have made, 58% of those have gone for utility payments, specified for utility payments, 32% for mortgage payments, and 10% for property tax assistance. And again, just plugging the 513relief.org, you can also call 946-7200 and press Option 3 for additional ways to get assistance. Also want to highlight a little bit about our partnership with Legal Aid. We are in the final stages of a contract with Legal Aid to help homeowners with the border revision process, so Legal Aid is doing several things for us, they're helping us educate the public and have connected homeowners directly into our mortgage, property tax, and utility relief programs when they are called by county residents. They've helped homeowners get into repayment plans with the Treasurer's Office, they're helping homeowners with applications for the owner occupancy and homestead credit, as allowed by Ohio law, and they're also helping homeowners with appraisals. You see some numbers here as well, to date, through our partners at Legal Aid, 58 homeowners received appraisals, and 44, based upon those appraisals, they are helping to guide 44 homeowners with assistance through the border revision complaint process as well. So just wanted to highlight our partnership with Legal Aid. Moving on to our home repair programs, another part of our 513 relief programming, so I wanted to... So I wanted to start off by highlighting the LED Safe Hamilton County program that the board recently put into place. This, there's 5.3 million available for Hamilton County homes, specifically those constructed before 1978. This is a partnership that we have with LISC, with Working in Neighborhoods, and with Habitat for Humanity. Households with income at or below the 80%, 80% of the area median income are eligible for this program. As the board is aware, we literally just kicked this off several weeks ago. To date though, we've got 146 inquiries and requests for information on the program. We have 14 applications in process. We have two fully returned applications that we're getting ready to start the inspection process on. So this program is starting to roll. We're excited about it. We expect to, to help roughly, and again, this all depends upon the costs of each individual home, but hoping to help around 200 homes through this, this program as well. And Anson Turley did a great job of explaining this to the board a couple of weeks back, but the stated goal of this program is to get lead out of homes and to help make children safer and residents of the, of the state safer by getting lead out of homes. But in the act of doing so, there's some pretty lenient program parameters in terms of the type of work that can be done to ensure that lead doesn't return to the home in any form in the future. So looking forward to getting more residents into that program and reporting out on some positive results here in the near future. Our utility relief programs, and I'm going to be hitting on just a, as I said, when I kicked the, the presentation off, there are so many programs on our 513relief.org site. I'm not going to be hitting all of them, just wanted to give a snapshot of some of the homeowner assistance programs that we have. Our MSD customer assistance program, specifically if you're a resident out there, if you're a low-income senior citizen who's in a home where you're paying your sewer bill, you are eligible to receive a 25% discount on your monthly sewer bill. This is something that can save people $120 or more per year. Again, you have to be 65 years or older, you have to live in your own home, pay the sewer bill. There's, there are income parameters as well, but again, we encourage folks to log on to 513relief.org to find information specifically about the customer assistance program. This is something that the Board of County Commissioners put into place, again, several years back, and went through a lot of analysis and deliberation in terms of how to do it. The revised code is fairly restrictive in terms of what we can do, and we're constantly trying to press that issue. But everything that the county can do as it relates to customer assistance through our sewer utility, we are in fact doing. Also wanted to highlight this particular program because it is timely. Residents can also get at it through 513relief.org, but this is CAA's Home Energy Assistance Summer Crisis Program. This is for one-time assistance to residents for cooling assistance through summer months. You can get up to $500 in electric utility bill assistance or assistance with the purchase of an air conditioning unit, et cetera. So again, encourage folks to go to that. There's also the Percentage of Income Payment Plan, or the PIP, which is advertised on our 513relief.org site. And this is a benefit that individuals can get through the state on a percentage of income basis related to electric or gas usage in their home. Again, 513relief.org, we'll have more information on that for, for residents. Again, if I haven't said it enough, go to 513relief.org. There's just a huge amount of information there in terms of how residents can get information and get information on how you can get some economic relief as homeowners or residents of the county. You can also dial 211. As I said, there's more available right now than there ever has been. I mentioned the mortgage relief at the start of this program, but that's even before you go back and consider everything that this board has done through the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, which in and of itself assisted over 20,000 renters in this county, which is just an incredible amount of benefit all the time when we've had sustained financial need and economic need that initially spurred from COVID-19, but then has also trickled into some other times of high inflation, et cetera. So the timing is, is right for these programs, and the board has been very proactive in getting these out and getting them publicized to residents. And we're just happy today to provide a bit of feedback on those programs that we're providing and certainly happy to answer any questions at this time. So Commissioner, I'll turn it back over to you.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm going to open it up, Vice President, Drew House.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Yeah, it's, it's good to be reminded of all that we have done and all that we are doing in this space, much of it attributable to the American Rescue Plan dollars that we got from the federal government. So thank you for reminding us of those numbers. I want to hone in a little bit on the slide where you've got the pie chart. It says mortgage, property tax, and utility relief. It's this one. Because I'm struck by the majority of the dollars going to utility payments as opposed to the other two sections. And I'm wondering if you could, I don't know if you can drill down a little bit on that or if someone in the room can drill down a little bit on that to help us better understand what that means.
Yeah, so, see, Michael coming to the, but just for folks who may be watching at home, what the, what the slide basically says, of the 2024 applications for mortgage, property tax, and utility assistance, as those were specified, as the reasoning for the, for the assistance request was specified on the application, it was a much higher percentage of individuals requesting assistance for utility assistance and then followed by mortgage relief and then followed by property tax. So, Michael, I don't know if you want to hit that.
Good question, Commissioner. I think it's just that there are folks who fall behind on the utilities more frequently than they do on their mortgage and their taxes. And so I think that's one of the areas where people are aware of the program and take advantage of the program through the Duke Energy and the utility assistance more frequently than the other two.
So is the Duke Energy money rolled into this?
Yes. So the whole, everything that we issue related to mortgage, rent, mortgage, utility, and taxes are a part of that number, yes.
Okay. Okay. So what?
In terms of expenditures, you mean?
Can I add something to that? I want to make sure I understand. So the $5 million that we, we put for this, my understanding was people who owned a home, because when they came out to the programs that we had, the rental assistance money could not be used for a homeowner who had utility issues, because it was kind of a state of emergency.
Mm-hmm.
And so we put this $5 million over there to allow them to do utility, mortgage, or property tax. But the property tax wasn't due at that time. So most of, it seems like they took advantage of this, but that's one of the things we saw. The reason we put the $5 million was because the rental, you couldn't, you couldn't get utility help if you owned a home.
Correct.
Okay. But it wasn't any Duke money put into there, or was it? I guess that's what.
I thought.
No, this is all ARPA funding paid towards utility, back due utilities for mortgage assistance, for the mortgage assistance program, as well as taxes, as well as back due mortgage.
But, but Duke, correct me if I'm wrong, Duke has a utility assistance program.
They have a separate program for their.
Outside of this.
Correct.
Okay, all right. That's what I was getting at. Yeah, so this is, this is all the county money.
This is all county money. That is correct. I'm sorry if that was not clear. Yeah, this is all ARPA county.
So it's, then it continues to strike me though, actually, we've got another pot of money that Duke is applying to utility relief, then we've got money that's for utility relief and the other two, property taxes and mortgage payments. I am really surprised that utility is so high because of Duke's program, and then they're pushing out information about their program. I'm just surprised that people aren't accessing that as, maybe the criteria is different, I don't know. But it's just striking to me. And, and the timeframe here, remind us what the time, because it's rolling right now. I mean, it's, it's rolling. When did we start? I don't remember when this money started to flow, this $5 million.
21.
From the, from the, for the, for the mortgage assistance program?
Yeah.
We've been administering that from 20, from, from the beginning, along with the rent utility.
21, a couple of years.
Remember we had that press conference?
Yeah, so, so the, the property tax piece, I don't, I don't know. It's, it's just so surprising to me. I mean, I know I've said it before, but, and even the mortgage payments are so much lower than the utility. I just, I just wonder what that dynamic is. I guess the property taxes, maybe, and I would be interested to see this, is, is that ramping up more right now because of the reassessment and the reevaluations? And, and is, so are we seeing more of that now? Or maybe not? Maybe it's, this has been the standard for the number of years that we've been running the program.
I think generally that's been the breakdown since its inception. Utility was always the higher number of applicants for that particular program. And again, I think it has to do with the fact that people tend to go delinquent on their utilities before they do on their taxes or their mortgage specifically.
Right, they're paying the mortgage first and then they're paying the utility.
Correct. And then the other thing that was just reminded as well, Jeff mentioned the PIP program, Percentage of Income Program. Duke also has that program that allows people to get some adjustments and incentives for how they pay their, how they pay their utilities as well. So that may be something they take advantage of, but it does not cover the back due utilities like our program does.
Absolutely. Okay.
It's more of a payment program.
And then, and yes, thank you. And then Jeff, just as a reminder, because we know there's a need here, we are allocating through a reallocation with the ARPA dollars. Remind us what that dollar meant?
$369,000 that we'll, that we'll be putting before the board this coming Thursday.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you.
Commissioner, do this. Thank you. Just a couple of comments. I'm really happy about LegalAid and how they've been involved in the appraisal process. We put money forward to help those who were having problems with their property taxes. So that looks real good. I had a question though, under the LED Safe Hamilton County slide, and it says that there have been two full applications returned and ready for inspection since launching, May the 16th, which is about 20 days ago. And my question is, LISC and Working in Neighborhoods are specifically assigned to Hamilton County for lead. And I'm not very, I'm not real impressed that we only have two full applications returned and ready for inspection. That's like one a week or, or one every three weeks. And I'm just wondering, if our money is for them to work on our people of Hamilton County, why is it only two full applications that have been done? Is it criteria too high? Is it the application process is too stiff or what's going on? I see we had 146 inquiries, 14 full applications in process. But my question specifically, Jeff, is are they assigned to our Hamilton County people? And why are they only have two ready to go? I, you know, maybe I'm a little too hard or whatever, but I would think if they have a group assigned specifically to Hamilton County, they should get more than two applications out and ready for inspection.
Yeah, so I'll kick it to Anson here. I think part of the answer though is we're a little bit less than a month into it and they're ramping up the, the education and the outreach on this. I think we'll start to see a lot more over the next couple of months, but Anson, I'll let you talk about more of the details of it.
Yeah, that's true. Of those 146 inquiries, some of them are duplicates. So if I call, if I email, they count that as an inquiry, but it's just one person.
Okay.
Second, Wynn is currently hiring someone who's just going to be dedicated just to this program.
Okay, good.
Right? So as Jeff mentioned, we're just ramping up.
Mm-hmm.
You know, as we do more outreach, as we do targeted marketing, we're going to find those people and we're going to be able to reach those 200 residents that we're, that we're targeting.
Okay. That helps. Thank you.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. One is the Community Action Agency program of just from our state days, they have a program because on everybody's bill, there is a fee. And that money goes to a program that the state of Ohio puts through the Community Action Agency. Now, many of us who've been up there, it's a madhouse. It's more people than they actually got money because it's the only place to go. Now, this was before COVID. Now, it has doubled. And Duke Energy gave us a warning and said that the bill is now going to double. So now we got double the amount of the bill. We've got COVID, and we got middle-class families, when we keep talking about the income level, middle-class families are getting killed because they're not super poor, but they're not super rich. And so they have to pay everything on the dollar. What we did when we did affordable housing, we said we're going to do $40 million. And I want to thank my colleagues because I had said that I wanted to carve out $5 million to put toward helping people keep the house they already have. And so we did it in 2021, but what we saw at the 513 relief bus, when the people were sleeping in their cars at 3:00 AM and waiting on the bus, because it was the only help, Hamilton County had the only help out there. We were the only ones in Hamilton County taking it to the people. And what I saw from people standing there and Canes and Walkers, we had to turn away senior citizens because the federal ARPA money did not allow them to get money because they said you got a social security check, even though everything went higher. So then as a board, we were able to do a million-dollar fund, and that was one of the things I said, can we do a million-dollar fund out of the levy dollars? So we've done that, and we've done that twice to try to help senior citizens. The second thing that we saw was people who own homes, we had a lot of money for rental assistance. If you were renting, we had money to help you pay the landlords, we had money to help you pay Duke Energy, and we even partnered with Duke Energy at the location so we can keep people's lights on. But there was nothing for the homeowner. The only place you could go would be that CAA that, that is basically funded by the people who pay your bill every month, there's a little fee on there. And so those people would have to go there, and they don't have enough money. I mean, it's a, you can go up there anytime. It's a madhouse trying to get some money for your utility bill, because now the number of people have doubled and tripled. So we had that, and so I would assume that the homeowners in there, you could pay for your mortgage, you could pay for your back taxes, or you could pay for your utilities. And at that time, it was a mad dash because there was no place for the middle-class family to go if you owned a home to get any type of help. So I would assume that that was there. The other thing I want to point out, and I want to thank, when we first got here, we have a website and it was so difficult to navigate. We had all this money from the federal government. Our board was putting programs out quick, quick as we can to try to help people, but it became very hard to get to it. And so I do want to acknowledge the administration. I went to Mr. Ludo about, we need something that people can apply on their phones. We need a portal. And so one of the first things we did, and Bridget Doherty, I want to commend her, we came up with a portal called 513relief. I said, I want a place where everybody can go and get everything. And it's easy for us to just tell people, 513relief.org. And it has had, I think in our first month, we had almost 200,000 people had visited. I don't know where we're at now, probably almost close to a million who have gone there. And I want to commend our county because that's something that we have, and it makes it easy for people to navigate. They don't have to go to 15 different websites and try to get it. They can do it on their smartphone. So I'm very proud that that has occurred. On this mortgage, property tax, and utility relief, I'm going to tell you that people are getting killed out here trying to hold their homes. And I know that our philosophy is we want affordability, but that includes the person that got a house already. Grandma wants to hold on to her house. And so June, we're in June, we're going to hear a lot because that's the second payment that's due. And we don't control the reevaluations, but we, I'm glad we're going to try to put another What I want to make sure is that we have the most lenient criteria. If the federal government ain't mandating it, we shouldn't be mandating it, so that more middle-class families can participate and be able to hold on to their house. And so I wanted to put that on the table, I asked Jeff to look into it, and he said he was going to get back to me to make sure that we're not putting extra barriers, but that we are the most, we looked at everything legally, most lenient, because I don't want someone to lose their home while the state tries to get it together. The state is trying to get, how do you do it? What do you do? And that's why I call for the governor of my state or the county to intervene. That was in February. I've been calling, he ain't answered the phone. He usually answer the phone. I don't know why not. I wonder why. But he appoints the tax commissioner. He can put a moratorium, a temporary freeze, to help people hold on while they try to fix this stuff up in Columbus. As you look at how many homes have served, you gave some zip codes, Mr. Administrator, but I want to highlight the names of where these zip codes are. Number one location is Westwood from home for this property mortgage tax and utility relief. from home for this property mortgage tax and utility relief. Then we've got Mount Hethy was second, according to this document you gave us. Mount Erie would be next. West Price Hill was next. Forest Park was next. Bond Hill was after that. St. Bernard was after that. Price Hill was after that. North Avondale was after that, and Northside, according to what you gave us. So I wanted people to know what zip codes that we have, that we have helped. So again, I appreciate this. I would like to maybe find this out. I asked the administrator for two things. One is to find out, making sure that we have the most inclusive, lenient, if you will, so that middle-class families can hold on until the state gets it right. And then second, I had asked about payment plans. Many of these people got payment plans before the reevaluations. And so they got this payment plan, they got a couple of months, and they was getting the money together. And then all of a sudden, the reevaluation came. They came to pay on the payment plan, but then was told your payment plan has gone up. And that's where people are getting caught in the switches. And I want to know, is there anything that happened, even with partnering with, with the Treasurer's Office or something? Because I just think it's wrong if I got a payment plan, they told me it's $500 in the next 60 days, and in 60 days, get here, I got the $500. But then you say, oh, no, oh, no, you now owe $1,500. Well, I kept my side of the bargain, but I know with the state coming in, is there any way that that becomes a new payment plan so you don't get kicked out and lose your home to foreclosure? So I wanted to ask him to look into that and get back with us. And then also, we get the money from when you're behind on your mortgage, on your property tax. We take a portion of that, and that's how we fund the land bank. And I appreciate the land bank, but I'm not trying to throw you out the house so that your house go in a land bank. And then all of a sudden, we can fund it for a dollar or $2 in the land bank. We wouldn't work with you to keep your house out of the land bank. So, and I know the land bank, we want to keep, we don't want a bunch of vacant houses. We want people in their house. So I think it goes hand in hand. And so I just wanted to know, is there a way to freeze or return or put in a fund to help with the back property taxes, something instead of the back, the back, the back interest? Can we freeze the, it's like we doing an amnesty program for the, with the dogs? Can there be some kind of amnesty on the property taxes on the back, on the, on the interest for being late, just a short amount of time? So I don't know if we could do that. I know we deal with, money comes to us, and then we pass it to the land bank. And the money we're getting is from people being late. And I'm just saying, stop it completely. I'm just saying, for a short amount of time, are we able to freeze it, you know, three months or whatever, freeze it, and then go back to, to just allow for Columbus to try to get it together? Because this whole thing formula comes out of Columbus with the property tax.
Yeah, Commissioner, those are three really good questions. You and I spoke about them. And I don't have specific, we're down the lane in getting some answers on some of those, but we'll get something back to the board on all three of these as soon as we can.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation. Okay, I make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121 22G4, to discuss collective bargaining.
Second?
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Drew House?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.